So first thing we'll look at is the minutes from December 9th, 2019, and also January 13th, 2020.
Well, we can't do the January 13th.
We'll have to do the 2019, December 9th one.
Yep. The only thing I saw on that would be on page three, third line from the top. Instead of incandescent sign, it should be incandescent light. I'll make a motion to approve the December 9th, 2019 minutes as written and revised.
Sir, second?
What, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He ordered.
So, January 13th.
We'll have to wait.
Will you just wait?
See if somebody else shows up.
Well, it is. Rob would have to show up for us to do it. They both show up.
Rob? Jim?
We just approved the minutes from December 9th. We're actually looking to approve the minutes from January 13th, 2020. Rob, you were part of that, and Will, myself, that meeting.
The final finally?
That's the latest. Yeah, it's originally by law.
Mm-hmm.
And the other one is, the blue one is, or you got a white one, this is the final committee.
Has anybody heard from the Attorney General regarding the last?
Nothing, and I checked with Kathy Kelly Reagan today, nothing.
Okay.
Stretching it to the end. You're on, Rob, we're doing the minutes, right?
We're doing the minutes, so I'll need a motion.
Yeah, for the...
January 13th.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the January 13th minutes as written.
As our second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, those are approved.
And to abstain.
Do the A and R for Carver Street. We'll do the...
Order.
Yeah, we'll approve the decision for the Dow General signed report. Got all written up, and that's where they called?
No, it's 505.
Oh, that's quick, well, we'll do the A and R then. Who is here for the A and R for Carver Street?
We don't.
Oh, come on up, sir.
Let the record show that I'm going to reaccuse myself. I've been contacted by Mr. Sewicki to work on these properties, he's going to discuss.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll read them.
Thank you, Rob. How are we doing today, sir?
Good, very well, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Just, you can have your A and R right there.
Hopefully, my faithful work is in order here in this municipal for the, at Eaton, Harold Eaton Engineering, basically what he did here was, yeah, I mean currently I'm living on 144 Carver Street with an ex amount of acres there, so what I did, I actually enlarged my lot that my house is sitting on, and moved just a frontage pin over, okay, so my, my lot itself is 250 feet where the house is sitting on, and, you know, I'm kind of retiring, I intend on selling it, this is a lot, so, I mean, it's more than adequate, it's 100, it's 150 feet by 1.8, 7, 8, 9 acres there, so, so the correction has been made, I've got two milars here, like six copies, and I believe Ramon did all his, all his work here, he filled all that out, I think.
See those?
The slots where the old boundary marker was, and the solid line where the correction was made there, so, just that the pin was moved from here to here, and there was like an old existing pin here, but we just eliminated that, so it's just a straight parallel line to the back, back portion of the piece of property.
And that leaves how much of a frontage for the new?
Should be 150.
Tolls is 150 total frontage. It's 135,02, and that little corner piece there is 14.98.
So it should be down to 1400.
Yes, 150.
The total is like 1.7.
This is lot two, lot three, what's lot one?
The original lot I sold.
Okay.
Because I bought that, I bought the piece of property with 200 feet, 600 feet of frontage originally.
Okay.
So they were all divided into three out of 200-foot frontages, okay, by Bill Farmer, and basically this is the lot I sold, owned by, and there's a house present here, he never sold the house here, but...
Okay, that's fine. I'm good with it.
You have the form filled out?
Yeah, I think the only thing I gotta do, I do believe, is got owner's signature, I think I gotta sign it.
Yep, you gotta sign it.
You both forget, right, you're going for...
A check?
And a check for two hundred fifty bucks, so...
Yes.
You don't like my pin? One is yours to keep.
Copy is mine?
Mm-hmm.
I just...
You don't have to sign it if you don't want.
Obviously.
And I'll take the... Someday we'll get to a point where it's credit cards accepted, huh? Thank you. One more please. One more please. Remove those over there and start signing them. Yep.
There you go, all right.
One of these, right?
Yes.
He gets one.
I keep one.
Can we go over the bands, playing the drawer?
So you'll sit down so you can keep going?
Rob's on the fourth, yeah.
I'll do the other A and R. So I can just play these before I say...
Just the other A and R now?
It's a, it's a big one right there.
I'm going to reaccuse myself again, I have already worked for Mr. Porter on this property.
Okay. Want to give me the two sheets, the application?
Jim, you weren't here for last meeting. I was short one milar, I ran out, I was printing milars, and my vendor did a gaffe to me to, to the following day, so that's the extra milar. So basically, this is a business estate lot, we've got the existing structure here, access from here, potential build out.
Break into the saw.
Yeah.
Yep.
And again, we'd have to incite when that, when that, before we do, because it's a business, so, commercial, so...
Yes, the locus?
Focus, zoning block, investment block, more of a record.
It's the name.
Yep.
It's the requirements.
Yeah, we know this before, we looked at it.
That order. This is the milar, I think. You can date it later. Thought you weren't going to be here. Thought you weren't going to be here. I thought you weren't going to be here.
Oh, I can, I, I ran west of. I'll see you tomorrow night, right?
That's right. General Two. Your pin's over there.
Okay.
Remember the green, green store?
Yeah.
Across from that instance, though.
Uh-huh, across from the green store.
I just didn't have time, so that's actually bothering me.
Like you were doing that with this?
No, it was a whole area, I was on the phone. Two, three, four.
Yeah, yeah.
Commercial, fire station has it, there is some stuff on it, places are not loaded yet.
You didn't see anything about it, did you?
I didn't see anything. Right down the section, I can take it.
Mr. Chairs.
I thought that was a big, no, no, it's not really a store reception down, it's on the fringe, so...
That's not a store.
Right, I know.
Close.
I know, it's the corridor here, the town comments, you want to keep your door, you know, closing.
That should be fine, that's not a place.
Okay, this one will be sure, I'll check again, thanks.
The other check from last time? No?
What?
Keep the other check?
You give it tomorrow, we all got it for?
Do it, okay, not like we got last time.
We require, we require four copies of milar and that little thing.
What's your copy?
All right, you all, take care of your leaders' office.
That's yours.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now that we're halfway through the meeting, no. Now supposedly at 5:15, we're supposed to have a public hearing for the veterans.
That's not happening.
Right, but we have to open and close and open and all that sort of stuff.
5:15?
It's 5:22.
We have to wait, okay, at this time, we're going to open the public meeting.
We have to have a motion.
Oh.
I'll make a motion, go ahead, Jim.
I'll make the motion to close the regular meeting and reconvene after the, after we close the, or continue the special meeting.
I'll second, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Okay, so at 5:15 PM, the planning board of the Town of Granby will hold a public hearing on Monday, November, actually, it's a continued one, so it's February 27th, 2020, at 5:15 PM, at One Library Lane, Top Floor, the nature of the hearing does consider the petition of Jason Richard, applicant and Town of Granby owner, seeking a site plan approval under section 6.3 of the Granby zoning bylaws, considering citing the Veterans Memorial Park to be located at 257 through 259 State Street, Grammy Mass, known as map 9-C-8, and my understanding that they wish to continue this to a later date.
Oh, I have to reaccuse myself.
Or a butter. Okay, so I'll be accused.
Don't go too far.
Is there a date that we're looking at, to continue it to?
The last, or last meeting of the month.
Is it coming?
Last meeting of, of February? So it'll be the 24th.
24th of February? Okay, so we're going to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing to February 24th.
Excuse me, they asked the end of March in their email.
Oh.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, so end of March.
So, we're looking at the...
One, two, 23rd.
23rd of March.
Okay.
Okay.
I will now make another motion to continue the public hearing to March 23rd at 5:15 PM.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, before going further, so you cannot be part of that, right, Rob?
Correct.
And I will not, I will not be at that, actually, no, I will be, I'm gone the week before that, so I apologize, all right, okay, so any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so continue to March 23rd, 2020, at 5:15 PM.
Okay. Should we?
Are we reopening?
Just as a note, though, if that's the only thing on the agenda, and there's a conflict between, and you're not here...
I will be here, but...
They can still participate under necessity for something like this.
Okay, okay.
Oh, yeah, then I could...
Yeah, because, because you're actually just in a butter.
Just in a butter.
I think I came up before, yeah, so, not just in a butter, but... All right, we have to approve the, well, sign the decision for the petition for Dow General, by National Sign Court.
Is that in here?
Yep, it's in there.
You won it, okay.
Does anybody know where the parking lot's closed off?
I don't know, I...
Where the what?
Where the parking lot?
Down here. At night, I think they close the lot so neighbors don't park in there, because neighbors have been parking there, and then they're there all day, and then you just kind of leave it there. Last I heard. Rob, you accused yourself to, from the veterans, because you're on the committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
He didn't vote on that, Sam.
Pardon?
I said he didn't vote on that.
All right, so this is all set, has everybody seen it, because the vote's already been taken.
Mm-hmm.
And it's been approved, this is the...
We just need a vote, just...
You were not part of the vote, no?
Right.
You were absent.
We need a vote to sign it.
Sign it, yes.
Or a motion, then vote.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Dow General's...
Sign.
Sign permit.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
There's no participation at this point, because it's already a closed hearing.
That part of that was a closed hearing, so... Okay, well, as soon as we finish that poll, if you can answer a question, we'll go have the answer of you, all right, so, all in favor of signing it?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, Rob, you abstain?
I abstain.
Okay, so four, yes, is the whole state?
Yes.
I'll keep these and give them to Kathy, then. I'm going to keep these signed ones and give them to Kathy. Do we have two copies here?
Only two, or just one, there's two copies?
We need two copies. There should be another one in there. There should be another one in there. Oh, that's for campaign expenses, if we...
So everybody has to sign, even though you're not?
Yeah, I guess.
State said he did not, uh, raise any money. Unless you did. Yeah, go home.
You want to sign this before you leave?
Yes.
Do you have time to go over the planning job description, seeing as you had some input?
I, I read it, I was okay with it.
Okay.
I'll present it.
The only thing that I want to throw out to the board that may be in that job description, it should be that the, uh, they, that person will take meeting minutes as well.
Works for me.
Yeah, that'd be good. That'd be good addition.
And if that person is speaking or conversing with the board, that person can gain access to the narrative from G-CAM.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good, a good point, because that, we keep on looking for someone to take the minutes.
Well, free up Lil and...
Yay! If that works.
Lil's in favor of it.
Yeah. Will Lil make a motion?
So that we can just send it off to, um, Chris Martin.
I don't think that's anything we need to vote on.
I don't know if anybody else needs to, um...
No, just recommendations from us, yeah.
Yeah, they asked a response in writing to Chris Martin, but all the times they... So the only, um, do you want to discuss that now, or we're kind of just...
Just one second, I don't get, I just, uh, what was your question?
Susan, I think, um, for Hill Road, I just was curious, we, um, when we were talking last meeting, you had shown us where the sign was going to be on one side of the building. Have you seen the pole? For quite some time, it's on the other side of the building. Uh, it's towards the road, but it's not actually at the building. And when we were looking at the diner, I mean, we're used to the signs going to be actually, you know, lower than the building and it'll be on the street side, but we don't see a pole yet, so I'm just, I'm just saying, please, I hope that that's still the case, that that's where the sign's gonna be, where you demonstrated it's going to be, um, because that'll keep our view of it for us. And then we've just sort of missed out on so much of this, and I think Carol is quite ill, so we've been able to catch up with them, about the parking lot seems to be elevated down the other side. And we're just curious about those lights, um, because that's exactly our, um, window in that side, and it's pretty large. Do you have any idea about what it's gonna look like in terms of the lights? Because we just, we weren't here for that, unfortunately. We didn't know this was happening until after we purchased.
I mean, I know they're gonna have lights spaced out to lay out the parking lot.
Do you know if they're gonna be capped on the top?
From my understanding, they're, they're like a horizontal, a horizontal LED light, so they shine like in a cone shape down.
Down.
So they don't project out, they're in a cone shape.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. From my understanding, that's, it's gonna be like that cone shape, they're coming straight down.
And will they shut those off at a certain time?
I believe it was a time.
I believe it was a half hour after closing.
And, and do you, no, that's great, and then do you know also of the security lights, which it looks like their, the building was really adorable, so that's nice, thanks. We're just worried about it looking tacky coming to this gorgeous purchase downtown. Uh, but it actually is quite cute, and it makes it feel like it's a little bit of a nice center there, a commercial, which is kind of cool. Um, but we're curious about, there's a, it seems like there's, there's emergency lights, and it looks like there's a wonderful long, um, metal piece, and I'm just hoping that those things are the emergency lights, because I know you said at one point that they were gonna have, um, security lights right there all the time.
I was talking about have security lights around the building for them.
All the time? They won't shut them off?
I, I don't think, because they're gonna be security lighting, so that the building's lit up. I think it's more just the building itself. I don't think it's shining out.
Out, just...
I think it's just the, the size of the building.
It won't be motion sensitive, just being...
I think it, I, I, that's, I don't know if it's motion sensitive or they're gonna be out all the time.
Is it anti-rigulation at all, or is it only about lights that shine? You know, the, the only family house that's over there, and the property next to it has really big, up shining up at, at Fair Hill Road, big security lights, without any cone on them. And I know Leveritt and a couple of other towns that are pleasantly dark skies, uh, have these, um, caps on security lights. Do you know, if there's anything as a, you know, as a, as a, I can...
I don't know, until, until actually they have those lights up, I wouldn't, I don't know what they're gonna look like, what they're gonna have on there.
There, there's no zoning against security lights being able to be brightly lit without a cap on them?
No. It's just, I, and I, from my understanding, from some of the discussions that were going on, it was gonna be on the outside of the building, shining down.
Shining down.
So, you know, scary lighting on the outside of the building, but till they're actually on there.
Yeah, no.
You don't know what they're gonna look like, but there's no, nothing to say. You know, they need to, they need to shine up what part of the building they think they need to, so for security.
Right. Well, I just noticed the shots, security lights on, you know, on those buildings, particularly the very last apartment building. Uh, most of them are sort of shining down, there's some acoustic that are shining down. But this one particular light is just blazing right up the hill.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, after it's done everything, then that's, you know, it's always, they're neighbors. There's always a conversation we can have with the owners, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
But there's nothing in zoning that prevents people from just having security lights that are uncapped, in terms of, what do they call it? No, they call it, uh, it's a cover on the light, but some...
I, you know, until, and actually look, as I go through it, I don't remember anything actually saying what kind of security light they can actually have, it's not a typical thing.
There's no law, age, or anything like security lights?
No. Well, like I said, they all, they, they, you know, I know we've had some conversations with them, uh, throughout our, our meetings here, them being a good neighbor, and some of the things they've, they've done. I think, you know, there's always conversations that could be had with any, you know, company, any business in town, you know, how it affects the neighbors and stuff like that, so we can see.
So would you recommend that if there's something like, a number of us have been talking about sort of the veterans, the veterinarian, and the daycare center, just keep their lights blazing all the time? They never turn them down, or turn them off? I'm just curious about, do you recommend just going and just knocking everyone, saying, "Hi"?
That's completely up to you.
It's up to you.
That's not us.
Because there's no, they usually have a regulation to turn off at ten o'clock, right? Not everybody does.
It, it, no, everybody doesn't, no. It's up to how was and, and those, those, they're on for a while. Okay, all right.
Hi, I'm Leonard, I'm here, uh, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-one, thirty-two. Um, yeah, I just wondered about Susan's question about the sign. I think we represented at the last meeting that the sign for the Dollar Store was gonna be on the two oh two State Street side of the building.
That's what they said, yeah.
And it just sort of made me repeat, it seems like there's a sign going on, not as the front entrance of the building's sign, which would be perpendicular to two oh two.
That's what it seems, and we don't know, we haven't seen it yet.
They haven't seen the sign up till it's up, I mean, the building inspector is following that part, that's, that's what his, his responsibility is, making sure that the plans are being followed, as, as they're designed.
You show us the plan, it's right, and you were assigned to it. Yeah, okay.
Actually, I believe that the lady representing, uh, what was her name, Joyce Kathy? She was the one that provided that drawing, I believe.
To me, it looked like they have a block, concrete block, they run the wire to the concrete block that's right out in front of the Dollar General store itself. That's gonna run right perpendicular, or parallel to, to two oh two.
No, no, we're, no, we're gonna do...
Well, until it's up, we won't know.
Right. And that was all designed as part of the plans, and that's going through the building inspector now.
Okay, so...
To keep, yeah, he'll do his part on that.
Can you go with the next one?
Yeah. We, we do have to get going, I'm sorry, folks, and I want to apologize, because I do have to leave, uh, so, um, do you have something else?
Well, yeah, there's, there's some other stuff that came up during the week, so I don't know if you wanted to stick around for that, or...
I do have to get going. Okay. Was there a major concern there or something?
Did you have something?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm...
Oh, okay, all right.
I want to take out that one. This must have been for me to sign here.
Is that the...
Yeah, Kathy sent it up for me to sign, she knew I'd be here tonight.
Oh, okay.
No, this is from Ju- July fifteenth. That's to us.
Yeah.
You said you were sending something for me to sign?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see anything in there.
No.
Was she sending in an email?
Tell me about that.
Just might be something that's been in there for a while, though.
This was from before.
I think that's what we were talking about before, it's supposed to be the response back to the...
That's what we're supposed to discuss, because it has to be in writing.
Yeah. Uh, just quickly before I leave, uh, while I leave, um, the select board was, I mean, for representative for Route two oh two. I, last meeting, Bob, I did mention your name, just because of your background and construction, I thought you'd be a, a good point person for it.
Is that the one that's only gonna take forty-five or forty-five minutes an hour?
Yeah, it's just gonna be me.
Depending on when it is, I...
Okay.
Sure, I'll, I'll do it, provided...
I, I just think I would be the best person for the, for the spots.
I'd like to make a motion, take a five-minute recess.
I'll second the motion.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're three minutes early, but...
That's all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, last week, we got a, uh, an email from Kathy Leonard about one of the butters, the Heelys, next to the Dollar General, taking, I don't, maybe you didn't get it, but I, I got a...
I got it.
I didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
Stating that they, they've got water in their basement.
Ooh.
So, um, I went down and took a look, the superintendent wasn't there. Um, of course, the ground was, you know, the ground's frozen, there, there is some water pooled up between the Heelys and, and the Dollar General store. And it also looks like there's some erosion from where they, they graded the bank off, the, 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 uh, the fencing they have, some, there's, there's some areas where it's, it looks like it's starting to slide down the hill a little bit. So, Jimmy, did, did the, did an engineer come out and speak to you from, from the Dollar General? No, nobody returned? Did you, you reached out to the engineer, or the, or the...
He sent pictures.
Pardon me?
He sent pictures, it was an email.
Okay.
I haven't all tried following them.
All right, so I'm recommending that we, we, we get in touch, form a letter or an email to, um, Greg Briggs, the building inspector, and make sure he follows up on this. And if necessary, hold this, hold the C.O. until this is rectified.
Okay, so what do you want to say to Greg?
Well, he's, he's got the correspondent, but, uh, I would, I would just send a letter stating that the, the planning board recommends that no C.O.'s issued...
On the Dollar General store?
To the Dollar General store until the, until the butters have been satisfied.
We're also concerned about that. I, I call it a retaining pond, or whatever, there's the upper one that did release, like you said, and hopefully they fixed that, that released into that, um, one that runs along our property line, and now there's a couple of feet of water in there, but at one time in December, when we tried contacting them and everything...
I have photos.
Um, the water came down and came up to that, that, uh, fence that they put up.
Yeah, the soap fence.
Soap fence, it came up and over that fence and into our property, the water. Right now, there's, Jimmy, you saw it, there's a tunnel. I don't know how...
Yeah, I stopped over, I stopped, swung over his house yesterday and took another look at it.
And feel free to stop by any time, especially in the spring.
It was up over the soap fence?
Yeah.
Wow.
Now, we had a peer review done.
Yes.
So...
So the problem I have with it is, obviously, it's gonna get better, hopefully, when they get grass and all that stuff there, but they, they created this pond that's alongside our property, and there's no fence. The one up front, they fenced all the way around it. I have kids, I have grandkids, um, it's not safe.
Well, there was no...
Also, don't worry about mosquitoes and...
Sure. And there was no discussion of any, any retainage along that property line, that I recall.
As I remember from the public hearing, they, Mr. and Mrs. Healy were here, and you folks expressed concern about the water issues. And they said, they're, they said loosely stated that they noticed your backyard and have since done additional planning, which is basically that swale between the Dollar General and your house, to help alleviate that problem.
But it's creating one of the problems now, it's going in our cellar.
Yeah.
And I told them that the water is coming off the back side.
Mm-hmm.
And they said it's coming off the front side. But then they go and build this pond out front that obviously no water, can you get into that? Well, obviously, the water's coming from somewhere.
Hmm.
Now it's, can't come from the road, because there's no way to get back there. So, whatever they've created, it's, it's a mess.
From an inf, from a complaint standpoint, who would handle the complaint? The planning board or the building inspector?
The building inspector has full control over construction.
Okay, so the bill, so we're gonna send this letter to the building inspector?
Yeah.
And should we have something in there that, we also recommend that the engineers or the building inspector contact Dollar General collectively? Or should, should we just let him handle it his way?
Just let them handle it, and I'll, and I'll have a conversation with them.
With Greg?
With Greg as well, to make sure...
Okay.
We get the engineers back and, and, and see what needs to be done to rectify it.
Mrs. Healy has a question.
I just want to let you know that I've reached out to that Chad Brubaker, um, you know, via emails, ever since before December, and I have everything documented on my phone, and, and he, you know, I've sent him pictures, I've sent him videos, that every time this happens, like every couple of weeks or whatever, I send it to him, so he knows everything that's going on. And what's gonna get back to me, it just never did. So, that's why I sent the email, because I, I need your help.
Well, that's why we're recommending that they don't issue the C.O.
Okay.
Until it's rectified that way, they're, you've got something to, we've got something, the town has something to, to hold them on.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
And like I, like I told you, if there's any damage or any expenses that you've, you've had to...
We had to build a whole, a whole new, you know, we had to break concrete in the cellar and create a new one.
So, document all that, and then, um, we'll, we'll talk to them about that as well, through, through, uh, the building inspector. through, through, uh, the building inspector.
I know when we talked about, um, creating a fence, I didn't know it was gonna be right up against the building either, and, you know, to me, I thought it'd be like a property line fence, you know, that keeps people from, you know, but also to protect us from, you know, kids or whatever are going on that property that way. It's, it's just not safe for anybody.
I would've thought the same thing, that it would've been somewhere near the property line, because originally they were talking about screening with arbor vitis.
Right.
And, and that's when you asked for a fence, yeah, which, okay.
So, in, in the letter, we can, we can identify the water issue that they have in their basement, the, the, um, the standing water between the two property lines and proper, um, fencing, because the reta, the retaining ponds up on, or retention ponds up, up on top...
Up on 202.
They're fenced in just for that reason.
No, proper fencing around, are you speaking just around the retaining pond or proper fencing period?
Proper fencing period.
Okay.
And we can tell Greg that we would, we would recommend a, a joint meeting of some sort of, and their engineer lets know how they're gonna, maybe they haven't finished, maybe they haven't connected all the pipes, maybe there's some other issues, obviously gradings initially now that's...
Yeah, from my memory, there was three ponds, I didn't know the first one was way up high, but they...
The one in the back of the store?
The one in the front.
In the front.
That's up like eight feet off of grade from where it used to be, the whole place is about eight feet higher than it used to be, but that pond is high, then you got the one that runs, uh, north-south along the property line, and then there's another one behind our property that they, they haven't finished yet, so I don't know how that's...
So, that, that may be part of the problem right now, that it's not holding, it's not retaining anything because it's, they haven't completed it, but nonetheless, we need an answer.
Exactly, and, and regardless, if they're having a retaining pond there, I'd like a fence of some sort.
Correct.
Because liability...
Yeah, I would've thought the fence would've been...
I, I was quite surprised to see that wooden fence when it was installed so close to the building itself.
They did that to hide the mechanicals, you know, the...
Oh, mm-hmm.
That's why it was put, I remember seeing it on the, on the plan, on the plan there, but it's, when you look, when, when, people typically look at plans, they, they look at a flat piece of paper, they're not looking at elevations and, and...
Well, it also, it also includes anybody's headlights, the trucks going around the back, you know, at least it hits the fast and doesn't come shooting across and stuff, I, I get it, but it doesn't help us on the part that I'm most worried about.
Correct, and, and there may need to be another, an additional fence installed, but let's, let's...
We'll start with this.
Let's engage with them and see where they're at with it, because we know they're not complete.
Are you gonna see Cathy tomorrow? I was gonna say, I'll send it to her and you can sign it, so we have an official signature, you know?
Yeah, I can try to get there tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm heading out of town at a little time, so I'll try and swing in there on my way up. Okay.
Should I talk to Greg or...
Yeah, I would, if I were you, I'd talk with him directly, and we'll follow up with him as well as far as recommending that he holds the CO until, until this thing gets...
Okay.
Do you guys feel that I'm gonna get a, you know, someone, I mean, I sent this email the next day you guys were on, I still haven't received anything from him since December, is this something that you think that I need to get a lawyer for?
I, I can't, I can't give you any advice on that, but what we can do is what I just said, we'll, we'll contact Greg, I'll do it personally and we'll send him a formal letter that we think he should hold off on the CO until this gets straightened out, and they're not gonna want a vacant building sitting there very long after they've sold it.
Every day, I thought it was supposed to be open on the fourteenth of January, was that someone?
I never heard, I myself never heard an open date.
An open date, okay.
I think Darrell of Super has mentioned that they were under contract to turn the building on, that's why they were working so hard to get it ready and stuff.
Oh, that's between them and the owner, contractor and the owner, so...
Would it be Dr. Briggs?
Briggs.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Sorry for your inconvenience.
Okay, what's next on the agenda here?
Can we back up to the planning board representative for the Route 202 study, we need a motion, and also, one of the things I requested was a name along with dates and times you're available.
Okay, so let me, let me interject on this a little bit, I know, um, Glenn just said you, you recommended you, but they're also looking for somebody from the Economic Development Committee, so I had a conversation with Jay earlier today that if we'd not, the plan was to nominate you for the Economic Development Committee...
Okay.
And then myself from the planning boards, seeing we both sit on both boards, so that if one can't make it, the other can to represent, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be so redundant, seeing we're all sitting on so many boards, but, but if you feel strong that you wanna, you wanna be on, I'm okay with that.
No, I, I mean, if, you've, uh...
We do have an overlap, so, you know, you could be just, you could be another...
But the three of us couldn't be there.
No, but, I mean, if one of us...
But it makes sense if...
Because we're both on the same board.
That's why I kind of brought that up.
Okay.
So...
So, would Lil represent planning?
No, she'd represent, um...
Economic development, and you would represent planning?
Right.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to nominate Jim Tromke for the, where are we here?
Route 202.
Uh, Route 202 study, as the planning board representative for the Route 202 study from, uh, was it PVPC regarding South Hadley connection or something?
Route 202 study.
Yeah.
Need a second?
One second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, we need, uh, you, you wanna send me the times and dates you're available, then I'll send it in, or...
Oh, to the select board?
Well, not, yeah, I guess, because there's other, weren't there other, um...
Well, basically...
Committees or something you're asking about?
Basically, I'm available the same dates you're available...
Okay.
Because of the...
Well, except for I'm retired, so I can be, they're in the middle of the day.
There's the email from Kathy, just to refresh your memory.
Yes, there's a good chance these could be day meetings.
Pardon?
These could be...
Take care. My, my guess is...
Sounds like just one meeting, the way they're talking, one meeting.
Forty-five minutes to an hour.
Forty-five minutes to an hour.
Yeah, there'll be several, so I'm, so I'm...
Good night.
Good night. I guess maybe what has to be, are you gonna be in Florida anytime soon in the near future?
I'm heading back there tomorrow, but these, these meetings are gonna go on through the whole process.
I didn't think so, not from that, I think they only wanted one meeting.
Oh, that's it?
To get our input, yeah, that's what it says down the bottom.
That's the way I read it, is just how you stated.
Well, then, I, I thought it was gonna be an ongoing thing as the, as the project moved forward, that's the way Jay kind of explained it to me as well.
That's not what I'm saying there.
No, that's not what I'm saying there either. That's why I thought it was gonna be multiple meetings, if one of us couldn't make it, then the other one could represent both. Just let me know when they, I'm, you know, I'm going out of town, but I don't imagine it's gonna happen in the next week or two.
Do you want that?
No, I have one, um, okay, I'll put your availability down the same date.
Well, maybe, maybe what the, the best thing would be is this...
Have them give us some...
Give some times and dates for you folks to toss it around, this Emily Keys Inez?
Yep.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you could, uh...
What are they gonna get out of sixty minutes on a project like that? My guess is there's gonna be some follow-up meetings.
Maybe I can get more information from them. Okay.
Okay.
Founding right of...
I skimmed through your, um, annual report.
Yes. Do you have any changes, or...
We, we look very busy.
We were, we were, this year, this year.
I'd like to make a motion to accept that for publication in the annual report as written.
Do you have a second? One second then.
We got two seconds here.
Two seconds?
Oh, I'm sorry, you were asking for a second. Okay, so...
I guess we do need someone to take minutes, it's hard.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Okay, so Bob, let me get your motion here, I was looking for my paperwork here.
To, to approve the, uh, Planning Board Annual Report for publication in the Town of Granby Annual Report as written.
The two, oh, the, uh, two thousand nineteen annual report submission to approve the Planning Board two thousand nineteen reserve submission.
Mm-hmm, perfect.
Okay, and Rob seconded it?
I seconded it.
Yeah?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, nice job, guys.
Thank you. Um, the job description, can I do that one?
Yeah, we already...
We just did.
We did that.
Well, let me make sure, did we do a motion? No.
I think they were just looking for input, I don't think we had the vote on it.
The responses required in writing.
Okay.
So, our response is that, um, we add to the job description that the planner takes a minute of the planning board meetings.
Correct.
I had one addition was that the designation of planner, I think it was, be added to the requirements, it's the same, um, designation that Ken Comey has already, so, they should have it missed that. And I had it fully disguised.
What, you mean as far as credentials go? Is that what you're talking about, Rob?
Yes. Adding, oh, I had a few other typos, I had attend all meetings of the planning board, it just says attend meetings, so attend all meetings of the planning board and zoning board of fields, they had as needed, and I just took that out, they should be there all the time, and then there's a typo on the, where it says, right, this is right before the essential skills and duties, you know, and perform similar work, similar or related work as required or as, TH is missing, an E.
Oh, okay.
And the last page, the professional certifications, AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners, be added to that. And there goes to that, and... I'll put it in a memo and get it to Cathy.
Okay. Interesting, that those certifications are highly desirable, not necessarily required, just desirable.
Yes.
Well, they're gonna have a hard time, if, if you put all the credentials that the planning board would be looking for...
Oh, yeah.
And all the credentials that conservation might be looking for, there's probably no such...
There is no annual.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, because the, the, as far as professional certifications, there weren't any for the planning board, it, I believe it was all for the conservation there.
Well, they probably got to looking for you, but...
I think they're in, they're in more of a need than we are right now.
Well, that's, that's gonna be kind of the problem, we're gonna be, I'm sure, struggling over sharing, sharing the services, you know, that's gonna work out.
Yeah, I, well, we'll have to see.
Well, it's just hard, it's not blaming anybody, but everybody's got needs and it's gonna be, we're gonna be bad on them, and our, like, and I would, I would say that when we get busy, they get busy, because a lot of what we're doing, they're involved.
Mm-hmm.
But that might, that way the work will be done kind of halfway for each one, they converge somewhat.
I'm not optimistic about it. Any help?
Yes.
You're welcome.
Do I do the PVPC D L T A application?
I thought that that, that the selectmen were taking that.
They did, and that's, um, actually Glenn mentioned in the last meeting that the select board decided to respond for the town, um, and one of the things that I was thinking of when we got that was master plan, and that's what they put in for, so master plan, so, I, I don't, we don't need to do any...
If the selectmen are taking it, let them, let them run with the ball, I don't understand how that works, but since we handled the, uh...
Well, if they wanna apply for the grant, let them apply.
D L T A.
If they get the grant, then...
I think they're applying for three different things on the grant, um, all in one fall. So, we'll see what happens.
Seems like there's been a lot of grants applied for and unreceived lately.
Yeah, um, although PVPC, if they can, if, if somebody else in other town is doing a master plan, then they'll bunch that in under one, so they have this money from the state that they're divvying out to the towns that are under it.
I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, if we lose PVPC due to a planner, are we gonna lose stuff such as this? Is this...
We're still part of, the town is part of PVPC, and they pay into it every year, like...
Okay, we are not the only ones that you, the planning board is not the only ones that use Pioneer Valley Planning Commission?
Correct. Economic Development has used it?
Correct. We use them, the town uses them for things like this, but we also use them as our consultant.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we have our separate contracts with that.
So, South Hadley uses them, but they have a full-time planner.
Okay, could we just go back to what you just said, we have a separate contract, we meaning the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, and the town has an additional contract with PVPC, I understand.
They have various contracts for different things.
Okay.
Like the Energy Committee has one... Like, the Energy Committee has one for helping with the Green Community Grants and applications.
I see, okay.
Our contract with them is for planning support.
Got you. Okay. I did, I wasn't aware of that.
There's just multiple services that offer to the Energy Committee. They don't, like, South Hadley wouldn't use them for planning support.
Right.
Because they have a full-time planner, unless it was some sort of special project they brought in.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, so that one's done.
So, we won't lose, like, this D L T A or D T L A? D L T A, okay.
The initial's right. This, 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 this. We are almost at the end. Do you wanna look at the bill?
The billing?
Yeah, I looked at that, that.
There's, there's one, I think, in there.
Did you see it, Rob?
Did you email that out or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Twice, I think I did.
Yeah.
As, as a reminder, and then, uh, back with the other meeting.
Yeah.
So, we owe Borrego almost fourteen hundred dollars of the, uh.
If I've covered everything, I don't, um, see, we received ten thousand five hundred sixty-six from them for all these different things.
Mm-hmm.
Then we need to bill them, eight thousand seven twenty-six for the public hearing notice. I don't know how much those are gonna be. Kathy's gonna tell me, or put it in there. And the tie-in bond review, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, and that was already, tie-in bond already received that forty-eight hundred dollars for the peer review.
And PVC, P, Pioneer Valley fees, and I don't think there's anything else we need to charge them for, because nothing was approved, so we can't, um, charge them for footprints or anything like that. Are we all okay on that one?
So, well, there's a lot of, uh, stuff that has to be added to it on the Borrego.
That Kathy has.
Correct.
Yes. Well, not a lot, just the, um.
Some stuff.
Yeah. Plus, charge for the public hearing notice, notice to the butters. Um, although they already paid fifty dollars to cover the notice to the butters, so I don't know if it's more than fifty dollars or what. Kathy gets the bill.
I would imagine that that was more than fifty dollars. There was a lot of the butters that were included in the registered mail.
Yeah, so Kathy, so this isn't not, these are not final numbers, they're just.
Okay.
Did I miss anything? And then I can get this to Kathy, so she can fill it out. Then we go to Granby Solar Dickinson Farms and Modification.
Mm-hmm.
Now, charge for the public hearing notice and notice to the butters, fee schedule. Our fee schedule says amendment to the site plan is a hundred dollars plus ten cents per square foot of structures.
Mm-hmm.
I, what is the, what is the square footage of the structures?
We will need that from them.
The footprint, right? It's the little, and they say they changed it. Is it on just the ones they changed, or is it on the whole thing?
No, the whole thing. It's on the whole thing.
Really?
Not the whole structure, but the whole solar field, all the footing.
Yeah, but if they've already paid it for the original approval, and then they amended the area, they've already paid.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
They already.
Actually, we may end up owing them money, because didn't they reduce the number of panels? Because they went from the stationary to the tracking panels, and they reduced the number. They re, they certainly reduced the footprint of the area that was involved. They pulled stuff away from wetlands.
They increased.
I don't believe so.
Well, they're gonna have to give us a, uh, we'll, we'll have to get a final.
Yeah.
Closeout on it before we can bill them, or, so, I wouldn't recommend closing anything out that hasn't been closed out, like Granby, uh, Dollar General. I wouldn't do anything with that until.
You mean, until the project is.
Until the project is.
So, you don't wanna bill anything for Dickinson's yet?
No, no.
Borrego we can, because there won't be anything there.
Borrego will be closed out, but the rest of them might still, until they have a C O and everything's.
C G. How about, uh, the oversized barn, the last one? That was from August. It was just for the oversized barn.
That was Kendall Street, was it?
Yes.
Yes.
That, that one was Kendall? Because we had another one on Route two oh two as well.
Right, that was down.
Okay, but this is Kendall Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that one we could bill. Or you wanna wait until you've built the barn?
Until the barn's.
I don't know. I, I kinda disagree with that, Jim. Let's build this now, and if there's any additional charges.
Okay.
And this way, it's done.
So, we're gonna bill this one.
Mm-hmm.
And the first one, that's it.
Correct, with the additional information provided by Kathy regarding the, um, the notice to the butters.
Okay, let me get to my spot here.
And who knows? The, the fourteen hundred dollars that Borrego still has in the escrow may still be, uh, maybe enough to cover all that.
I think it's that and more, but.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna bill for Borrego Solar. Okay, so, um, we need a motion. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna bill only for Borrego Solar and Raymond Beaujolais after the final, nah, we don't need to put that.
No. Those are the only two we're gonna bill for.
Right. But we don't put a dollar amount in there yet, because, subject to Kathy, Leonard, we don't wanna put that in the motion.
Right.
We do or we don't?
Okay, put in that, subject to the, uh.
To additional charges. From.
Tom.
Us, that's, that's, we're getting out of whack here.
Yeah, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be lumping Borrego and, uh, um, Beaujolais together.
Okay, so, to bill Borrego Solar, let me go back to that dollar. We don't have a final dollar amount. Do we wanna wait until I get that from her? And then go ahead and do this?
Then we can put a specific number in there that we're voting on.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'll bring that to the next meeting.
I would say that would be the same with both of them. Just doing both at the same time with exact numbers.
Okay. Okay, so that takes care of that. I just, it's been so long, I didn't wanna lose.
Yeah.
I was trying to think of that. Plus, the income.
Was there, did PVPC, they can do anything with Raymond Beaujolais?
Um, there is some timing there, isn't there? On the list?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's right here. Yes, you are correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, you are correct. Four hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cents. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, so billing, we got that done, we got that done, we got that done, we got that done, we got that done. Response to the select board. It's the only thing we have left, because we are in violation, because we didn't respond within thirty days. Master general law says we have to respond within thirty days.
Well, if we're in violation, so be it.
One of them's already taken care of.
The, the master plan?
Yeah.
And now he's looking for us to, to rezone?
Consider extending Industrial One Park zoning.
It's under consideration, and we have, we've, we haven't had time to, to, to be doing that. It's not a matter of us just rezoning. It's gotta go to town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I know, but they're looking for a plan of action.
Well, I mean, that doesn't really give me enough.
The last sentence says, review the two items, and what the board knows when possible, the planning board's proposed action on them.
That, the second one doesn't give me enough information from reading that, as to what they're, whereabouts they're talking about.
Oh, the first one, the industrial, it's actually number one on their list.
Oh, number one.
Just go on.
Okay.
Well, that's from the Economic Development Committee.
Well, it hasn't been a priority with everything else we've had on our plate, with the, with the, the solar rezoning and the, and.
Right, so we need to say what we're gonna do now.
So. You know, we'll look into it at the next meeting. It's, I, I don't know what the big rush is. It's al, it's almost all wetlands back there where they were referring to. There's some, there's some land in the very back that might, but.
Is this the southerly side of New Ludlow Road?
Yes.
After the residential houses, before the town line?
Correct.
Yeah, that's where Industrial One is always.
And that's, no, that's what they wanna make Industrial One.
They, they, from South Hadley.
To extend it, yeah.
Coming in from South Hadley on the right-hand side.
Out to South Street on the right-hand side.
Well, no, not up to South Street. It's only up to where the, uh.
First house is.
To extend Park Two to South Hadley Line? That's not very far.
No, it's all wet, it's all wet, yeah. There's some drier, higher land in the back. I don't know if it would perk anyway.
Out in the back it will, because I did a perk test out there for a gentleman a number of years ago, um, where we were able to get one hundred feet, but we were a hundred feet from wetlands. However, we were probably, I guesstimate, four hundred feet off the road.
That's pretty wet there.
Yeah, it is.
So, it's our wetlands first, right up against the roads?
I, I'll try to remember to bring in a wetland map, so that the board can see it of that area.
So, no response?
So.
No.
We can work on it. This is, this is a small.
Yeah, we can work on it, but we did, we'd have to respond to them. That's, that's the bottom law. We have to respond.
You can just tell them that we're gonna take it under consideration. I don't feel com, I don't say I don't feel comfortable, but for the amount of effort we put into these things, if we're gonna hold a hearing and go through the whole process, then let's see what else we're gonna do at the same time and present to the town, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, as we had made a checklist for.
Yeah, we'll add it to our list.
Number of years.
Yeah, we'll add it to, to, to some of the.
Yeah, if we're gonna catch up with the May meeting, we're rapidly running out of time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but, you know. Tell them if they hurry up and hire a planner, maybe we could speed the, the process up a little bit. The town voted to approve a planner, how long ago?
Over a year ago.
Over a year ago, yeah, and they're pressing us to do something that they haven't fulfilled their obligation as yet, so. I'm all in favor of doing it, but, you know, it's, there's a process, and it takes time, and if you're gonna go through that whole process, it would be good if we added some other items to the, to the list of things we're gonna do.
Right.
So, what if we respond to them by saying they wanna know our proposed action on the items? Um, so, the proposed actions.
We're taking it under consideration.
And we'll add it to the list of other items that are, that are considered.
We'll take, I don't think that's what they're looking for.
No, well.
Items under consideration, actually. Master plan is already being taken care of by the selectmen.
No, they, they can't take care of the master.
Well, I know they can't take care of.
They're applying for the grant, for the grant, and then it comes back into our, if they get the grant, then it comes back to us and we get to, to work with it. And maybe we'll add that into the master plan at the same time.
Add the zoning?
Yeah.
So, proposed action, actions are the board will. Something about the master plan that they already, the D L T A grant.
And the other thing is, I'd like to, rather than just say, okay, we're gonna go after and rezone that, let's look at a comprehensive plan of the, of the, the, the rest of the town where there may be some changes we might wanna make. We, we've had discussions about East Street.
I was just gonna mention that.
So, it's not just, you know.
With the, uh.
How about if we say the board will include?
Air Force bought, bought the property.
Yeah, the thing is, Westover's got a smaller noise area now. We have to do something about that area, right? All along, we're, we're.
Yeah.
Well, we can still leave it as residential, as it is.
We can, but we have to do something, because it was.
We don't have to.
There's some sort of quirk in there that we have to do something, because they can't build on it.
They can build on it.
That isn't what I was told.
The problem, the problem is, is that Westo, I think it's Westover Metropolitan owns the property.
They managed it for this.
They would only, this, whoever was building there would only lease.
I thought there was a problem because of the noise abatement area, or whatever they called it, that because it was there, they couldn't, and I don't know if that's in our bylaws or something, that it has to be moved, or.
No, that was nothing, we got nothing to do with that. That's, that was strictly them offering residents.
The opportunity to sell out.
To sell out because of the, the, the noise, and, and now that they've changed the, the aircraft that's redesigned them, or the different engines in them, now that the, the, uh, the noise abatement area has, has, uh, shrunk a little bit, the way I understand it.
Yes.
Nonetheless, they still own it.
Yes, and there was something.
And we've been talking about this for a little while, about, you know, well, maybe that would be a good area, seeing there's, there's, um, there's water there, that that might be a good area to rezone as business or, or something along those lines. And if there's a business in there, then that doesn't really affect even the abatement area, because you're not exposed to it, you know?
Right.
Okay, so the pro, proposed actions of the board will include the.
New Ludlow Road, Su- South Side New Ludlow Road area.
Will, will be, will include investigating. The extension of Industrial Number One Park zoning to include.
Will include it to the agenda.
To the South Hadley Line.
Up to the, just to all of the, the area.
What? Line along New Ludlow Road. Since the airport's open twenty-four seven, additional revenue. So, they're thinking people, businesses would build there. Okay, so include investigating the extension of the, of Industrial Number One Park zoning to the South Hadley Line along New Ludlow Road, and at its next meeting.
I wanna talk about, we're gonna, we need to take a comprehensive look at, at the other areas in town that we've discussed.
So, we'll say, starting at its next meeting. But then, um, the master plan, the board will.
The board awaits.
Will wait for the D L T A application.
Approval. Approval.
Approval. Thinking positive. For the master plan.
Correct.
That says we're doing something.
Mm-hmm.
And we're... We don't have any deadlines or anything like that. We're putting in there, we're just saying we're starting it. That's all we can say for now.
Well, are you on this Granby Economic Development?
Yeah, you're welcome.
So what's the proposal here?
And...
I mean, what's the idea? I mean, why they... Why was this being discussed in New Ludlow Road? What's... You guys see potential there, or...
Well, here it says, "Since Westover Airport is now open twenty-four seven..."
I see that, but...
This could lead to additional revenue. So they're thinking, if I understand it correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, that potential businesses could go in there, but right now it's not zoned for that.
But... So did... I think I'm going on your line, Rob. Was... Why wasn't the letter addressed from the Economic Development Committee?
Because they're a committee appointed by the... Appointed by the selectmen.
So the Economic Development Committee approached the board of selectmen who in turn...
Reported back to the selectmen with a few recommendations.
I see.
And we discussed it. It was... It kept coming up, oh, it's in the... It's in the planning board's lap, and it's not a hot topic right now.
That's right.
We're just getting out of, you know, all the other stuff we did with solar and all the solar farms that have been coming in, and we've been pretty busy.
But there was some potential you guys saw in this area?
Yeah, well, the potential's there with the rest of that land that's been rezoned already. That's high and dry, and nobody's been jumping on that, you know?
Well, farther down the road, you think, or...
Up the road, heading toward South Street.
Yeah, around the right hand.
That whole area got rezoned to a business park overlay. And that would be more... In my opinion, that would be more advantageous if I was a developer to jump on that.
Right.
If it was for sale, to do something with it before that lower area, that's a little bit... No. Wetlands locked, if you will.
Mm-hmm. I'll bring that... I meant to do that today, but I just didn't get to it. Bring the wetland map in.
For the whole town?
No, for that area.
That's pretty solid.
So we need to... We probably should do a motion just to cover it.
Okay.
Motion to... I'll make a motion just to... Do you want me to read that whole thing?
No. You can just say that we're responding to the select board.
Okay.
We have a second?
We can buy...
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To respond, to send a response to the...
Selectmen.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Can we just say our next meeting is February tenth?
Sure.
And I assume we're starting at five, and we don't have anything particular going right now, so might be a short one. We could go over... Can we go over open items, so we can get them out of there?
Isn't a lot of that you and Ken?
Well, Glenn is one. Planning board, and to obtain clarification from Pitts Martin, regarding date and when the name is submitted, we can call that completed. And forward the D L T A request for planning board for their information, which I did. And Ken, that he's gotta do, yeah. G Z A requested a... To be on our preferred vendor list for peer reviewer, and he was supposed to contact them to get their information. The rest of it is ongoing. Okay. Motion made.
Do we have a second? One second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.